Good evening. I'm going to call the Planning Commission for this evening to order. Tonight is Thursday night, July 6th. It is 6:30 and we are ready to start. So I will start with the roll call. To my left today.
Nancy Anderson.
Larry Crandall.
Shannon Collins.
Eric Brooks.
Jane Garrison.
Matthew Petrich.
We're missing Rossina Farrell. So, but maybe she'll make it. We'll see. So, tonight we have six commissioners. All right. So, as everyone had a chance to check out the agenda.
I recommend that the agenda be approved as submitted.
I recommend that the agenda be approved as submitted.
Second?
All those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And the agenda is approved 6-0. Okay. So, next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. And what we are going to do tonight is we have two sets of agendas. We have the agenda from June 1st and we have the agenda from June 15th. And we need to, we need two separate motions to approve each of them. So let's start with the June 1st minutes, which I know have been revised. And if there are any further revisions, well first, first let's have a motion to approve them and then a second and then we can deliberate if that's necessary.
I move that the minutes from the June 1st meeting be approved. I mean be, yes.
Approved as revised.
Approved as revised. I will second that motion.
Okay. Are there any comments or any further revisions to the June 1st minutes?
I still don't understand why it's more, it's, uh... Why it creates an extra step to not have a land use plan on page 2. It just doesn't make sense to, it says it creates an extra step to changing the current zoning map when it alleviates an extra step because we don't have to change both the land use map and the zoning map. We only have to change the zoning map. So I still don't understand that, but I will let it go if everybody else thinks it's okay.
Does staff want to respond?
Commissioner Garrison, we can clarify after the meeting if that's okay with you.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes from June 1st, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, the minutes from June 1st are approved 6-0. And now I'll entertain a motion for the June 15th minutes.
So moved.
And a second. And any comments or revisions for the June 15th meeting?
Nancy Anderson was not present.
Oh, good catch. That's right. Right? Yeah. Okay. You guys got that? So let's have a motion to approve the minutes with that one revision, I think.
I will move that we approve the June 15 minutes with the revision.
Second?
I second that motion.
All those in favor of approving the minutes with that revision, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the minutes from June 15th are approved 6-0. Okay, so now we will move into the time where the public can come speak. This is the non-agenda section of the meeting for the public to speak. Anyone who would like to speak would have three minutes per person or five minutes if you're representing an organization. So would anyone like to speak at this time?
No.
Not yet. Okay. So I will close the public comment period seeing there's no one who would like to speak during this public comment section. So in that case, we will move to new business. And tonight for new business, we have the comprehensive plan amendments. It's the capital facilities element. This is a work session and I will turn it over to Cheryl Paston. Or maybe Doug first, sorry. I'll turn it over to Doug.
Thank you Chair Collins. I am Doug McIntyre. I'm a senior planner with the Department of Community Development. To my right is Cheryl Paston. She is the deputy director of Public Works and she's here to kind of tag-team the presentation on the second docketed comprehensive plan amendment that we are analyzing in 2017. The first one being the transportation element, which you held a public hearing on at our June 15th meeting and subsequently recommended to the city council with revisions. So I wanted to take a step back and look at the kind of broad outline of where we were and where we're headed. As I mentioned, we had a docket that was set in December of 2016 and I recognize that two of the commissioners are new since that date. So the other four commissioners tonight will hopefully recall the deliberations that we had on the eight proposals that were submitted. Out of those eight, only two text amendments were placed on the docket. And what that means, again as a refresher, is that two of the eight were deemed appropriate and in line with what the city council wanted staff to review. And the docket, of course, is taking place in, the review of the docket is taking place in two phases. The first one, as I mentioned, was the transportation element. And we are here tonight with the fresh look on the amendments to three parts of the comprehensive plan. One is the environment and conservation element. The other is the utilities element. And the third and final is the capital facilities plan. And we will, of course, go into more detail as we move through the presentation. So that middle bar of this slide is outlining why we're here today. Again, that's to review the amendment and ultimately at our July 20th meeting is we will hold the public hearing and hold deliberations and seek a recommendation from the Planning Commission to City Council. Once that recommendation is made, then City Council will have their own review process, of course, and will hopefully adopt the comprehensive plan amendment in some form or fashion. And now that we kind of talked about the process, I wanted to take a moment to talk about what the comprehensive plan amendments are. I know that in my, in my experience, this has always been a relatively difficult process because it's got two distinct parts to it. The first being the docket, the second being the review, the legislative review. And the comprehensive plan itself tends to be somewhat of an esoteric document. It's a policy document, but it also relates to very specific implementation items. It's, it touches a lot of different parts of the city and a lot of different programs and plans that the city, the city works with every day. So it's, it's both a broad and specific document. And we, there are two ways to update the comprehensive plan. One is through what we call the periodic update, which we spoke with the Planning Commission in some detail when we talked about our Title 24A amendments, which were recommended at the June 1st meeting. That periodic update is really meant to be the major update. It's meant to be the holistic look. Where is the city now versus where it was when the last update was adopted? Have there been changes in the state laws? Have there been changes in the market? Have there been changes in policy direction of the city? There's a wide variety of things that we want to look at through the periodic update. And that is done, of course, every eight years, which is, again, part of the Growth Management Act provisions. And when you do that, you essentially have to adopt a very specific work program. And that work program outlines what you will be amending through that, through that update. Also timeframes and the manner in which the city will engage the public. It's pretty specific and again, it's a, something that's adopted very specifically in relation to that periodic update. And finally, it's a very, again, policy level document. It's that real official policy statement of how the city will grow. Now flip that over to how we amend it on an annual basis, which is also allowed under the Growth Management Act. You're limited to no more frequently than once per year. And these amendments that are proposed under what we call, again, the annual amendment are targeted in nature. They're typically narrowly focused. For example, we deal with oftentimes site-specific requests where a property owner may want to, for instance, change zoning or provide some other very specific change to their property. It could also relate to specific policies, could relate to specific, very specific items in the comp plan. And once those proposals are collected, we go through the docket process, which I've alluded to in my earlier remarks. And again, what that does is it sets the review for the following year. The legislative review will take place in that following year. And again, that's a very specific process and it's, it is a council-adopted docket, but again, for very narrow circumstances. And generally speaking, they are, these amendments are made to improve the consistency of the document. That's one of the major impetus behind the Growth Management Act is to have a comprehensive plan that is consistent internally and externally. Consistent within itself with the policies and all the various elements, as well as consistent with the implementing documents, regulations, programs, plans that the city works with. So again, finally, just think in terms of the implementation side of it versus the high-level policy direction side of it. So that clear line drawn between the annual amendment and the periodic update. So hopefully that provides a little bit of a foundation for, again, what we're going to be looking at tonight. So with that being said, this is a slide that you've seen before. I've tweaked it a little bit to reflect the upcoming process, but the Planning Commission plays a vital role in all of this. It essentially is the first review that we have in the legislative process. It's a way to vet the proposals. It's a way to ensure that they're consistent with the Growth Management Act. And it's a way to ensure that it's consistent with what we want to do as a city. You are, in a sense, the voice of the public. You're appointed to do, to take the time to provide a very, a certain lens to how you review these proposals. So that's really the role that Planning Commission plays. And ultimately, again, it culminates in a recommendation to the City Council. So with that, I will turn it over to Cheryl to go over kind of what we, how did we get to now? What did we do in the past year to get to the point where we're at today?
Evening Chair, Commission. Excuse me. Sorry. Good evening Chair and Commission. As Doug mentioned, I would like to take you back a few months to last December to give you an overview of four key items that the council adopted that, for the most part, formed the reason why we're here before you with the amendments in front of you. The first was an update of the public work standards. This was actually an update of the first public work standards that the city adopted way back in 2000. In fact, it was called the interim public work standards and it remained that name until last year. This document does identify the required permitting and minimum engineering requirements for all work on private development and then work in the city's right-of-way. It does supplement the Sammamish municipal code. It does not replace it. So that's, that's a really important item. When, in some instances, one, either the SMC or the public work standards is more strict. So whatever's more strict, that's, that's what the city will, will impose. Just, just so you all understand kind of the relationship between those two documents. The second one was also adopted in December of last year and it's the Storm and Surface Water Management Comprehensive Plan. Now this also was an update of the 2001 Stormwater Comprehensive Plan. One of the amendments that we're proposing before, to you today, is that we've changed the name and, and we've updated this plan. It does identify specific plans and projects to meet some of the goals that are listed in the city's comprehensive plan. And it also helps us to achieve the requirements of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, or what we call NPDES. It does describe the current and future stormwater issues and needs, as well as the city's stormwater system, the existing projects and programs that are underway right now, and then recommends new programs and projects in the future to meet the regulatory needs, to meet the vision of the city and the goals that are outlined in the, in the comprehensive plan. So that's the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan. The third item, this is the adoption of the King County Surface Water Design Manual and Sammamish Addendum. Again, this was adopted in December of last year. It is a requirement of our NPDES permit. And this one regulates design, construction, inspection, and maintenance of stormwater facilities. That's all, it does not address, you know, road design or anything like that. It is limited to stormwater facilities in Sammamish. We, we adopted a, the Sammamish Addendum because obviously the King County Surface Water Design Manual refers to the county. It refers to, you know, specific places in the county. So the addendum basically just tailors what's needed to, to the city of Sammamish. The fourth item that the council adopted in December were updates to the Low Impact Development Codes. For those of you who were here last year, you certainly, we met with you, I can't remember how many, how many times we, we met with you. This is a very complex set of documents and in particular the LID codes. This, this code is a suite of management and site design techniques to mimic natural drainage processes to control runoff and treat stormwater. So an example is to encourage infiltration instead of just letting it run off the site. It also provides technical guidance and requirements for planning, design, and maintenance of LID facilities. And again, this is a permit requirement, NPDES permit requirement to make sure that our LID codes are consistent with the Surface Water Design Manual and our Sammamish Addendum. So those are the four really high-level items that the council adopted last year. So this amendment is the last legislative step needed to implement all of those four plans listed above. And again, as Doug mentioned, the, what we're asking for the most part is that these amendments be made to ensure consistency with these four items and then within the comprehensive plan itself.
One second. I'd also like to add to the new commissioners, just so that you know, the Planning Commission spent almost all of last year on all four of those documents. So in addition to the city council approving all those documents, they were all vetted through all of us as well. So we have seen those documents before.
And it did definitely make the documents much clearer, stronger, and I think reflect the vision and the desires of the community as well. So it was, it was a good process. Thank you. These items here are what each of the amendments to the comp plan need to address. And the next few slides will, will go over them in more detail. So this proposed amendment is our minor non-substantive updates, again, to improve the consistency amongst the three chapters that are listed there. One of the changes is to reflect the change in name of the stormwater, I think it used to be called the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan, and now it is the Storm and Surface Water Management Comprehensive Plan. And just as a background, we decided to, to change it because surface water is a key feature of Sammamish, not just stormwater. Stormwater oftentimes can be, people kind of see that as, well, that's runoff from roads and houses and things, but the surface wa, we really wanted to capture the, the lakes and the streams and the creeks in the city that are very, very important, obviously, to our community. So, so we did change the name. The, the comprehensive plan had old links to an outdated design manual, so that's, that's certainly a needed update. We did insert the 2017 to 2022 Surface Water CIP and the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan into this amendment. The 2015, or sorry, the comprehensive plan actually showed the 2013 to the 2018 Stormwater CIP and the 2015 to the 2035 Transportation CIP. So we wanted to be more consistent with the most current adopted six-year CIPs, which again are the 2017 to the 2022 SW Surface Water CIP and Transportation CIP. And then another small update was to change the list of publicly-owned stormwater assets. As we have, get more of our assets mapped, we know, we have a more accurate count of, for example, how many ponds we have, how many miles of storm drain pipes we have, how many catch bays. So those kinds of details, so. The anticipated impacts of the proposed amendment, again, it will make them consistent with those four documents that, or four items that I described. And again, it will incorporate the latest six-year Surface Water and Transportation Capital Improvement Project lists. The existing comprehensive plan guidance should no longer continue in effect because, again, sorry, feels like I'm just repeating things, but it's because the council did adopt more current documents and they, they should be reflected in the comprehensive plan. It complies with the Growth Management Act, again, by ensuring consistency and then updates, there's an update of our inventory of our existing stormwater assets. It complies with our Sammamish vision statement by referring, or I'm sorry, referencing the current Surface Water Design Manual and Addendum and the Low Impact Development Codes in compliance with our permit. And then it updates our capital projects. And these projects do, some of them will enhance our environment and aquatic habitat and they definitely will mitigate construction impacts to local surface water bodies. The functional plan, the city's functional plans and CIPs will support the revisions of the proposed amendment by ensuring that the, these current documents do reference each other and that they're referenced in the comprehensive plan. So that way the reader knows where, what the latest information and background documents
So I'll jump in here to give you the, again, reiterate the next steps on this after following Cheryl's discussion on the criteria. So again, tonight, we're here for the work session. On July 20th, which is two weeks from today, we will hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment and will seek a recommendation from Planning Commission to be forwarded to the City Council. And then once City Council gets it, there will be a public hearing on September 5th. If you recall, both Planning Commission and City Council do not hold meetings in August. So our next chance to get it to them is September. At that September 5th meeting, they will conduct a first reading of the ordinance and then they will come back on September 19th and do a second reading of the ordinance. And then importantly, again, because we had the docket the way it was, the first amendment being the transportation element, we will have a consolidated ordinance which amends the comp plan at one time. So that's a way for us to stagger the reviews due to time and resources and then wrap it up at once at the end of the year. And that's currently planned for the fall of 2017. So with that, I will turn it back over to Chair Collins. And if there are questions, we can certainly do our best to answer.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I apologize. I should have had these sent by email and see if you can answer them, but I think I have everything correct. The last statement on the fall, or on this action thing that's in front of us would indicate that last year, the, was signed on July, or December 6th, and hopefully you want to get this done before the end of 2017. Just, okay. And now going back, when, on the first item, when we talk about dockets being placed on the, one of your slides, and no need to go back, they would appear on the 2018 work plan, not the 2000. Any, any docket proposal that comes in now would not be on the 2017 work plan, but would be on the 2018. That's a question, sorry.
Thank you Commissioner Crandall, Vice Chair Crandall. You're correct that we do, we have, or we will, at the end of September, be closing the application period for the 2018 docket. So anything that, anything that is proposed between now and the end of September will be part of the next round of review. So you'll, toward the end of this year, we will come back to you with the docket and we'll review the docket with you. So that's, again, kind of going back to the, the first step in the process in this annual cycle. So, so that is correct.
And I, in a way, I threw that out there because I think that might help the public understanding that we're really talking about 2018 work plan. Is it all right if I go to storm water, or storm and surface water? Okay. The, again, I should have asked this ahead of time, but I go through what's in the storm and surface water infrastructure and they list many things. The only thing that jumped out at me and maybe I need, or I do need clarification, is septic tanks. Do they fall under the sewer side or, okay?
Actually, King County, King County regulates the septic tanks. So that is not a Sammamish, definitely not a Sammamish Public Works responsibility, but actually King County regulates them.
Thank you. That's all.
As a follow-up, does the city keep tabs on the locations of the septic tanks? I would assume that that'd be a source of like seepage, you know, kind of subsurface water. It'd be part of the grand scheme of things. Without knowledge of that, it might be difficult to force, to manage, I guess.
The city does not track them. We have no way of knowing. I mean, we can sort of, you can kind of tell because we have, we have maps of the sewer system. So obviously, any home that's not near a sewer system has, has a septic tank. But no, we do not directly monitor them. Again, that's something that King County regulates. I know King County has proposed, and I want to say it was last year, they proposed a fee for, for homes that are on septic so that they could inspect them every year. And it was not approved by the county council, but I think one of their concerns was, was what you were referring to is, is the failing septic systems. Because presumably those that are, that are working correctly and that are being maintained correctly should, you know, operate such that the effluent is, is at an acceptable level. But I apologize, I can't, I can't give you any more information about that.
I guess, not to belabor the point, it was more about the thought that it is a source of subsurface, of subsurface water that we as a community have to deal with. In some cases, there's been seepage issues coming out of hillsides and things. So without that knowledge, I understand that we don't regulate them, but still they exist and it might be, it might be another part of the equation that might be interesting to know about. You never know when you look at all these things, what might come from it, but certainly not trying to increase your workload.
One of the items in the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan that we have recommended and that the council has adopted or approved is to initiate a, hesitate to say comprehensive because that implies that we'll be able to launch off on this really well-rounded water quality monitoring program. But they did give us, I guess I'll call it seed money, to develop a citywide water quality monitoring program. So certainly, some of the constituents will be fecal coliform, which is a clear indication of something going on, whether it's from animals or human. You can, you can do tests to differentiate between the two. So there, there is some proposed plans that the council has adopted that will allow us to get a better understanding of the health of our creeks. And, and actually, another activity that they have adopted or approved, other projects, is to develop basin plans. And so those basin plans over the next, hopefully 10 years or so, they will also identify, you know, what, what kinds of sources, whether they're non-point or point sources of pollution within each of the basins. That's a little bit longer term because we can only, you know, do so much every year, but certainly those two projects and programs that the council has adopted, we hope, will give us a better idea of what specific action we should take based on water quality monitoring. give us a better idea of what specific action we should take based on water quality monitoring.
Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to follow up on that. Can you clarify just briefly, for the purposes of tonight's meeting, the, how surface water is impacted by this whole stormwater discussion? I mean, I know how stormwater runs down into our lake, but, you know, I guess I'm particularly concerned about Lake Sammamish and it being navigable. What, does Sammamish have, even though, you know, the line runs down the middle, that theoretically, it's part of the city, what kind of jurisdiction do we have? And is that at all relevant for, to what we're talking about tonight? You know, the quality of the water and how stormwater runoff and/or septic tanks or whatever impact, or the use, you know, recreational use of it, impact the quality of that water? Are we talking about that at all tonight?
Not directly, not directly. But it is a, people, people have whole careers based on water quality. What, what impacts water quality, how to treat it, how to ensure that it's as clean as possible. So I will try to be brief, but I certainly would welcome, you know, we could have a separate conversation on it. Sammamish, as well as, I would say, all of the surrounding cities that, that are upstream of Lake Sammamish do coordinate together, really, under the auspices of the NPDES permit. There's a lot of regional coordination going on about sampling that's happening, what kinds of results that the agencies are finding. They work really closely with the Department of Ecology to understand better what the inputs are to Lake Sammamish and what the, what the result is of the water quality of that lake. And not just of Lake Sammamish, I mean, we, we conduct water sampling for Pine Lake and Beaver Lake. We have sampled, we are sampling actually Ebright Creek right now for some of the water quality constituents. So the, the, you know, not, no one agency has jurisdiction over, I'm sorry, no one local agency has jurisdiction over Lake Sammamish. We all work together to try to, to control and, and manage and treat our, our own stormwater runoff before it does get to the lake. It's difficult to really completely understand what the water quality is of a, of a water body such as Lake, the size of Lake Sammamish. But there certainly are studies that indicate, that give us some idea of, of the quality of the water. One of the programs and groups that, that a number of the regional agencies coordinate with is the Kokoni Work Group. The Kokoni are, the health of the Kokoni is a good proxy for water quality of Lake Sammamish because they are resident, they don't, they don't migrate out of the lake. So this group does really focus on, on Kokoni habitat and their, the runs of Kokoni. Because, again, it is difficult to tell exactly what the water quality is of Lake Sammamish. And plus, it would, it'll differ depending on where you are, depending on the time of year and all that. So I don't, not sure if I really have answered your question, but it is a very complex subject, very complex. And, but we, the city of Sammamish is very active in coordinating and talking with other jurisdictions in the region to just keep on top of what the latest technology is, what kinds of information that people are, are learning about lake and stream and surface water management.
Thank you.
I have a comment and a, and a question. I, this gave me a chance to really look at the comprehensive plan, and I was really impressed. I thought it was, the goals were wonderful, the mapping was wonderful. I just, I got into that, I just couldn't quit reading it, the soils maps and the, and the different ways you look at stormwater or surface water, the flooding plus the erosion, the two different ways, approaches you might take when you look at it. I thought it was just so well-done. But I have to say, when I look at real, the real world, and when I see what's out there, I'm not as impressed. And what I, there seems to be are a lot of great big pits that look like they belong in an industrial, industrial park, surrounded by chain-linked fence or with steep slopes going down because you don't want to waste land when you put those big retention ponds in. So do we have other choices in Sammamish? If a developer came with a project, would he be able to choose a different way of doing it besides using the land in this way?
What we did as part of the Low Impact Development Codes, and you're, you're completely right, those stormwater ponds and vaults are quite, many of them are quite unsightly. And, and you're right, it was all about efficiency, efficient use of the land because the land is, is obviously quite, quite valuable. What we did last year was to bring together a group of stakeholders, of developers, private engineer, or consulting engineers, and then city staff, I think that was, those were the folks on our, oh, and then we had some members of the public to come and help us figure out. Everybody agreed that we didn't like those rectangular openings with, you know, straight, the way that you described them, and one of our residents actually called them stormwater prisons. And so we worked really closely with our stakeholder committee to, to try to come up with, with different requirements. And so that, that is actually what we did, is we are now requiring that all stormwater ponds, so vaults are underground, all stormwater ponds need, must be, what do you, what, what's the word? It, it has to look more natural so that you cannot have right angles on the pond, it has to be sinuous, sinuous?
Curvilinear.
Curvilinear, thank you, it has to be curvilinear. We want natural or native plants to be planted around, around the pond. So it is, that is a requirement, starting January of this year, that, that we will not allow those rectangular open boxes anymore.
There was also a slope requirement, right?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, there is a slope requirement, yes. And there's a, there is a maximum height, because some ponds, because of their proximity to maybe an existing development, that maybe one edge, we need, they need to build a wall, there's a limit to how high that wall can be and how much of that linear, the perimeter can be a wall. So we are working, again, thanks to our, our community who really pushed us to say, you know, that this doesn't fit Sammamish's character, those square rectangular open, open ponds.
Are there any different approaches, such as underground tanks or, I was reading about sediment pipes? Any other ways to handle it so that you don't have to designate an area just for surface water, stormwater retention? Because that's part of it. It, it, it really is a big hole in the environment where nothing else can happen. It's not good for habitat. It's, it has to be cleaned out every now and then. I think you have to have short grasses that you mow. Is that not true?
Yes, we do mow the, the ponds. And yes, a developer has the option to, to build a tank. So it's completely underground and maybe put a parking lot on top or maybe a park. So they, they do have that option.
They do?
Yes, they do.
Wonderful. So that is a, it's, it's a matter of cost, and it just becomes a matter of cost. And if, is the land worth it?
A couple of examples of vaults that are buried under parking lots, we actually have two right off of 228th. The Habitat for Humanity cottages at 21st and 228th has a vault under that parking lot that was just constructed. And the, the Metropolitan Market Project, the ground level, surface level parking has a vault underneath it as well.
Thank you. And actually, the side, this, this road that goes down towards the community center, there's a vault under that road as well.
Now I won't complain about much else.
We did have extensive conversations about the vaults last year, and we had some really good public testimony, actually, that sort of enlightened us. So it was a good discussion.
Hopefully, another quick thing here. On the page CF10, the, I guess it's the revised list of capital improvement projects. I was wondering how current those costs were, I'm not even sure of how relevant it is, but it seems like the, it appears a lot of them have gone up significantly, so I'm sure that's just a result of newer numbers being sought. And then to follow up on the, the second, the next page after the CF11, there's a number of projects that have been struck out, and I'm just curious if those, if that indicates that those projects have been completed or if they've just been not, decided to be, not be done. I know at least one of them there, I think, I thought there was at least one in there that I sure hadn't been done, but just, just wondering about that.
As a follow-up to that as well, we, a lot of these tables have their totals crossed out and there's no new total, and neither here nor there to me, but I think, you know, when the final document comes out, that we should ensure that there is a, the math has been done.
Okay. Sorry, I'm, to your last point, I'm looking at the red line and it's hard to tell where the numbers are, but we will definitely check that. Let's see, and the other, the, the projects that are struck out have either been completed or we've dealt with them in another way, for example, doing more maintenance, and it, or it looks like we may have renumbered them. For example, the, let's see, Beaver Management on page CF11, number 16, is now on page CF10 SWE. I believe that's the same. And some of the, the explanation of the costs, the version in the, in the current comprehensive plan, again, was 2015 to 2035. This is just 2017 to 2022. So we're, we're just making it more consistent, just showing the six years, not, what is it, 20 years' worth of, of projects? So some of them also dropped off because it was, it's not in that six-year window.
When I went through C10, C11, and C12, my math didn't match this math at all, and I think that, I don't want to dwell on that, I just wanted to make a point of it.
We, we will double-check that, thank you.
I have a comment, or a question on CF13. What does no mean?
It's whether or not it's a concurrency project.
Does it mean it doesn't have to meet concurrency?
It is not a concurrency project, and therefore, it is not eligible for traffic impact fees.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's a good, good answer. Gets rid of another question, I think.
Does everybody know what concurrency is? Would anybody like an explanation?
You know, I actually learned about that a couple of meetings ago. It was not clear before that, so I, I think for the sake of the public, if nobody else, it'd be great to hear definition.
Mr. McIntyre, just real quick.
I'll give a real high-level overview, because it relates to a variety of things, not just transportation. Essentially, what it is, is it's a growth management tool that says that, just real high-level, growth should happen at the same time that infrastructure and services are available for that growth. So the impact resulting from X development is, is essentially, has X amount of infrastructure available to it at the time that it is built. And the way that the Growth Management Act essentially defines it is that it's either at the time of development or within six years of that development, which is why our capital improvement plans are six-year plans. It's one of the reasons why. So that's kind of the high-level nutshell. It's a, it's a growth management tool to ensure that impacts are dealt with.
That's perfect.
Chair Collins brought back a little bit, bit of memory from last year, and it was all pleasing because the edification of being able to see the different aspects of low-impact development and the water-related, like the retention ponds, and then listening to, I think, I can't remember which modifier you used, but very insightful testimony and sharing by the public on stormwater. It was, I think we visited many of the things and it was just pleasing to see them reflected here.
If I could tag on to what Doug said, I'd like to invite you and all of our listening audience to the council meeting this Monday. Public Works and our consultants will provide a pretty in-depth presentation on, on concurrency as it relates to the transportation list of capital projects. It's, it's, it's kind of complicated, but we're, we're really hoping that it'll be clear once, once the meeting's over, but we certainly invite everybody to attend or, listen in on Channel 21.
Is that the meeting on the 10th? I, I think it's at 4:30, is that correct?
Yes, it is, because it's a study session and the study sessions start early, so thank you for, for making sure folks know about that.
Okay. Commissioner Garrison, we may have cut you off a little bit when we started talking about concurrency. Did you have more comments?
I just have one more, and it, it just, I, I like clarity. That's one reason I thought the comp plan was so well-done, because it, it was really clear what you wanted. But in this document, when, I was just wondering if subtotals on these various items wouldn't help clarify what you're talking about. If you could total them up and then say total of such-and-such type of project, or total of projects by location, total of projects by type. Because you do divide them up, why couldn't you have subtotals? And I just think that would make it so much easier to read than, rather than to get to the bottom and have this giant number that you have to go back through and run all the calculations to see if it works and...
We will certainly do that.
Okay, I guess that's it, so, unless you have any others?
I have nothing.
Okay, good.
I'm thrilled.
Okay, excellent. All right. So next meeting on July 20th, we'll do the public hearing, and so we can come ready for deliberations. And I was wondering if Mr. McIntyre might be able to tell us what else we'll be doing that night? Or if it'll just be the public hearing?
So you reminded me that I needed to make a note that the Planning Commission advanced calendar that we typically provide with the packet was unfortunately not provided with this packet, and we apologize for that. It has to do with a variety of things, but one of them being vacations around the holidays. So apologize for that. But, so in the absence of that, I don't have anything in front of me, but I believe our July 20th is the public hearing for this proposal in front of, in front of the commission. At the moment, I can't recall if there is a second item on that agenda.
Is it electronic reader boards? I'm just wondering.
So electronic reader boards was postponed for further review. So that will come a little bit later, likely in the late September, early October timeframe. I, off the top of my head, I believe this is the only item on the July 20th agenda, but I apologize, and I can follow up on that for sure.
No big deal.
So at the July 20th meeting, we will present the revised red line version, based on comments we heard today, which are very helpful, thank you. We'll present the revised version, and we will probably do some high-level presentation on what was changed. And then we will open it up for public hearing, close the public hearing, and then Planning Commission will deliberate and hopefully recommend a version of the proposal to City Council for further review.
Okay, thank you for the presentation tonight.
Wait, before we get too far beyond this, I want to clarify one slide I saw, and I know there was some discussion briefly about this, but it's the, the availability of these documents, the 2016 King The, the 2016 King County Surface Water Design Manual and the Smamish Addendum are not easy to locate on the city website, and this, there's a table, I believe, that is being eliminated in the current version. And, so, this, this simple statement that says, "These documents are available on the city website at www.smapish.us," didn't lead me to the documents. I was able to find what I think were versions of them, but some of them were draft versions, and, so I would recommend that we have those somewhere that, that's clear, which version of the document, and that they're actually, we don't, I, I had to type in search terms into the, the, into the website to find them. So, somewhere more easy to access.
Thank you, Commissioner Petrich, for bringing that up. That is a point we could clarify. You're, you're correct that the green box at the bottom is being deleted, as you can see, kind of by the black bar on the right, which indicates, this is done in track changes, so that the bars on the right indicate that there's an edit being made there. So, that will be deleted, because as you mentioned, those are old links. One of the struggles that we have with links in a document is that they change all the time, and we don't want to have a document that links you to something that then is a, what do they call that? The 451 search error or something, you know, returns a sad face. So, we, what we could do there is clarify, these documents are available on the city's website at www.smapish.us, or by contacting the city, because we are, we can also, staff can email or provide hard copies or other, other, we can, we can provide these documents to the public in other ways. So, maybe we can edit that and just say, or contact the front desk.
Yeah, or, or, you know, make that, that link to Smamish longer, because I'm sure there is a, a, a document section or in the planning portion or something, you know, some way of leading further beyond the homepage.
Yeah, we, and, and that's what we struggle with, is that those links do change frequently, and we, to the extent possible, don't want to have a, an old link in, in the document. So, we can certainly think about this one a little bit more and come back with a proposal next, at our next meeting. You know, just by way of example, earlier this year, the city actually redid the whole website, and that eliminated like 90% of the links, and so, there was a whole kind of, you know, effort in, in just fixing links where they needed to be fixed. So, we, we're trying to stay away from that as much as possible, but I think we can maybe take a look at that and do a better job of being a little bit more specific, so Cheryl and I can...
Thank you.
Right. It's for the, the community member that's trying to do it at 10 o'clock at night, and staff is, they're not here, and...
Some of us are here.
Well, 24-hour hotline, huh?
Maybe just direct him to the stormwater page. I'm, I'm sure there is a stormwater page.
Yeah, we can, we can do a better job of, of further directing, so we will do that. Thank you for the input on that. That's important.
Okay. Next thing tonight would be the public comment period for this agenda item. So, is there anyone who would like to speak this evening with regards to the comprehensive plan amendments that we've talked about tonight? We'll start with Mary Victor.
My name is Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. Thanks for the presentation and bringing this. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I did do a lot of work with stormwater last year, and we didn't make it through. First of all, the comp plan itself for the city, the first one that they ever had, the city incorporated in 1999 in August, and then the first comprehensive plan to do the Growth Management Act and other things was 2003. And the next official comp plan, it took three years. They started working on it in 2012, so it was 2015. So, that's the one we're updating. And there really kind of wasn't one in between. I do understand there were some sort of significant changes in about 2005, but basically, the comp plans don't come up very often, even though they're supposed to come up at eight years. And I will tell you, from having submitted a tiny docket request last year, getting changes is pretty much impossible. So, I guess what I would say is, you guys typically do an extremely detailed review, which I think is awesome, even on minutes and other things, so I'm thankful for that. But if you have any changes that should go in, you need to get them to that July 20th meeting, because otherwise, it just goes on, and it gets harder and harder to make them. Also, I believe Doug said that you guys are the voice of the people, and I've told you before, it doesn't matter what I say up here, it matters what you do. I kind of feel like it's the Electoral College, you know, I vote, but I don't really vote for the president, someone else does. So, if you guys don't take, I don't know why our direct input can't be done, it just seems like it isn't, but I think that it's really important. So, I think anything that you do catch, small, medium, or large, is very, very important. So, for example, I'd never seen a docket before, since they were working from 2012 to 2015 on the comp plan, they didn't have a docket, and I knew they were making stormwater changes, but I didn't know what they were going to put in those. So, I did a thing saying, hey, you have maps, and they're wrong, and like one doesn't even have a label or a legend, and then, and basically, those aren't getting put in because they're in background, so they're not in the sections that are getting revised. But I just think it's really important to be able to have revisions done. And it, it sounds like the only thing we can do is the environment conservation, the utilities, and the, the capital changes, that they're not doing any other sections, so you don't get a choice about that. Also, there were four things submitted by people, four things submitted by the city, and only two were selected out of all that, just to let you know, because that was not clear in the thing. And then I did have a question that maybe can answer after I finish talking. On the first page, C, CF10, I guess it's the second one that isn't redlined, the inventory of the existing facilities for surface water actually went down, like from 277 to 218, which is 60 miles less. From 9,300 structures to about 8,100 structures, which is like 1,200 structures less. And instead of 95 miles, 64 miles, which is like another 30, 30 difference, and then the other two went up slightly. So, I just, it seems to me that if you're doing inventory, I was really surprised that they would go down, not up, so I wanted to know the reason why, and don't know if those numbers need to get checked. Thanks to Eric Brook for the question on septics. The Department of Health is in charge of septics, but the city does water, stormwater, and then regular domestic use water is done by Smamish Plateau Water with sewer or the Northeast Smamish Plateau Water District. It seems to me, and I've gone to a lot of their meetings, that the city and the water districts need to work seamlessly together and share data. I don't find that they do that, while they may have some materials. I don't think they really know where the sewers are, and I think if you're sending stormwater in areas that have septics, particularly the old septics, it's not a good thing to do. So, I've been pushing kind of on both ends, including the water district, to get that information, and make sure it's updated. The city, it can also be used for some of the land acquisition planning. So, I have worked on that and gotten what I have to the parks people. I think the only other thing was, was what Matt had said, Commissioner Petrich. It really is hard to find the documents online, and I'm not sure that the draft ones that are there actually have all the updates that they're supposed to have based on the adoption with agreements that were made. I haven't particularly looked for some that are really important, but is there a deadline that the city has to meet those updates by, or is it just going to say draft for, like the last ones were 2001, so it seems like it's a long time. So, anyway, so those are my couple of questions. If you could respond on why they went down, and finding the docs where they're located, and when will they be updated officially?
So, can, we have a couple of CF10 pages. Which, which one were you referring to?
It's the one without the red line. It's, it's both of them, but the second one's easier to read. So, it's UT10, and then under the capital facilities element, it's CF10, where it has surface water, and it's all red without any red lines on it. And that's before CF11s, and then there's a second CF10, so it's the first time you see CF10 in the packet. I always have problems with the pagination of these packets, annoying how to talk from them. So, there's two CF10s. It's the first CF10, how about that? But you're lucky today, it's only like 22 pages, so it's hard to flip through. Last year was like 900 pages.
Okay, so I guess, and I would like to ask staff about that, that, why do the numbers...
Go down significantly.
Why do they go down?
And some significantly.
I will, I will double-check those. I was cutting and pasting, and I might have cut and pasted the wrong direction, so I will double-check those.
Well, I can see, like, if you did the Inglewood, and you're replacing some ditches with pipes, you'd have a smaller number, but it's not 60 miles or 1,200 facilities.
Well, wait, I'm looking at the UT10, and they went, okay, so miles of pipe went down, from 277 to 218? Is that where you're looking at?
So, it went 277 to 218 in miles of pipe. It went from 9,300 to 8,120 for structures, which is a lot, right? And then from 95 miles to 64 miles, so that's like another 30 miles.
Well, I was thinking for structures, it went from 938 to 1,200. That would be an increase.
I think it went from 930 to 8,120. It's, it's funny, red lines.
Well, it's, so it's, well, it's hard to read the red lines and know, but I just, just like Jane says, you got to look at the numbers and wonder if they're correct, so it's worth double-checking, because it's really hard to change.
It's just how the public works, to take a double-check. And maybe, is, is it okay with the rest of the commissioners if when we get it back, we, we see a, a non-red line?
I'd love to see a non-red line.
Anybody want to see that?
I think, I had to look at it over and over, and I came up to your conclusion, Ms. Victor.
Mary.
I, I looked at it again, and the red lines were going through the commas, and they, they forced the, us to think they were decimals, and it was so confusing.
It's very hard to read the red line.
But then when I finally got it out, I thought, maybe it does make sense, and I, I think if you really work it over and think about it, it, it's right.
I'm sure it is.
So, I scratched out all my, all my scribbling. It took me hours, but I've scratched it all out, and, and now I'm back to thinking it might be all right, so...
So, like maybe a before-table and an after-table right next to each other, and then that way, instead of everybody spending tons of time, you can just glance and go, cool, they went up, or cool, they went down, or...
We'll have public works take a look at that.
We'll definitely take a look, but I do want to clarify that the first bullet on UT10, it was actually 77 miles to 218. So, it's, it's, but you're right, it is just by...
It's very hard to read.
The track changes being, track changes. So, we will provide a clean copy. Didn't want to do that yet, because that's jumping the gun a little bit, so...
Yeah, and then I, I think I echo Ms. Victor's comment about the, the draft versions of documents that linger on the website, and it becomes unclear whether those actually embody all of the potential changes that have happened. It'd be great to get a, like, a version marked final or something.
We will definitely have the finals there. The, it gets a little problematic to keep, we go through so many drafts. I, I guess what I kind of heard from Ms. Victor is to have the drafts there as well.
It's okay to have the drafts, but just to have something that is in the marked the finals. In fact, it's like, you don't have the 2003 comp plan anymore, but it's used at some of your meetings, and if we ask for it, it's not there, but, like, so I had made a request at one time, if you could have the archive, like, King County has archived docs, so here's the 1998, here's the, they have all the ones. And then the errata sheet, if you have that, then it tells you, oh, as we read these, we found these little changes, so Mary Victor doesn't have to come to meetings for the next six years to tell you the right change and the right meeting day. It just would really help things if those type of things could be done.
We'd miss you if you didn't come to our meetings.
It's pretty tiring, working and doing this, so... Anyway, thanks for the work you do and answering the questions, and hopefully, I'll see you on the 20th.
Thanks for the comment, Mary. Paul?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. All right. Well, with that, I will close the public comment for this agenda item. And the last thing I need is a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Collins, before you do that, can I ask, since we have everybody here, if there are any absences planned?
Oh, yeah. Any absences planned for July 20th? Since it's the public hearing, we want to make sure that we have a quorum.
I plan to be here.
I plan to be here. I'm sure, is everybody? Yeah?
I plan to be here.
Good, so we should have at least four.
Great. Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
I will move that we adjourn the meeting for tonight.
A second.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And that means that the, the meeting is adjourned, 6-0. Good evening. Oh, thank you, Larry. It is 7:34. Good night, everybody.